I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Oh, first of all, I just want to tell everybody that we have one board member that's on the screen, Pete Sullivan, who's with us tonight remotely. Pete, if you could just give a wave. Awesome, thank you. If I may have a motion to approve the agenda, please. Thanks, Robyn. Thanks, Renee. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The 2022-2023 proposed budget presentation and adoption. Darren, please. And Mike.
Good evening. Also say good evening to everyone out here. Thank you for being present for our last and final board presentation relative to the budget. So just to walk us through the agenda. The first part of our time together is to define the purpose and legal requirements of the superintendent and the Board of Education. We'll review the budget guidelines, the enacted budget impacts, which is to be determined since the state is proposed budget will probably pass Wednesday or Thursday. We'll go through and we'll walk you each through the budget programs and services format. And we will review summary of revenue sources and introduce two propositions, neither of which will have a tax or debt impact. And then we'll conclude with any questions that you had before. I ultimately ask you to vote on the budget to transfer from our developmental process to a budget of your own. So tonight's tasks, we'll transition from budget development to budget spending. We will present the expected funding resources for the proposed budget, and we will review the two propositions to the voters regarding the use of reserve funds for specific legal purposes. And again, both of those reserves will not have a tax impact. So the purpose of tonight is to present the superintendent's recommended proposed budget to the Board of Education to consider adopting as your own. We will need formal action at the time, so it's either approve or not approve. And you will also be asked to approve the New York State property tax cap report card. Also, we need to meet the usual legal requirements of the budget development process while addressing the current health, education, and financial environments. The proposed budget utilized the same staffing as the 2021-22 school year, plus positions added during the current school year. Also, it reflects the level of sustainability, taking care of today's urgent priorities without creating a crisis for tomorrow. We've been talking about a fiscal cliff for probably a decade now, so we want to make sure that what we do today does not hinder us moving forward in the future. So the process obviously has started, and all of you are very familiar with this, with the district planning team establishing budget guidelines. I'll go through these quickly. One of the things that we want to make sure that we have is a rigorous, engaging, equitable, and authentic curriculum. We want to make sure that we're providing the highest level of curriculum to our students. We want to provide experiences that reflect the benefits of the whole child, so maintaining those curricular and extracurricular courses and activities. We want to increase the use of technology. We want to support equity and inclusion practices. We want to support SEL and mental health supports, which we know have been significant this year, not only in Pittsburgh but across the state, across the country. We want to make sure we have safe schools and safe facilities. Again, we haven't talked a lot this year or last year around the worst-case scenarios relative to things like active shooter, and want to bring back that sense of urgency relative to our physical plant and making sure we have a level of preparedness for it, which will entail a significant amount more of training and support and possible changes to our physical plant. We also want to make sure we're recruiting a diverse candidate pool, and we have time for professional collaboration, so our staff are at the top of their game as we put them in front of our students. We also understand the importance of professional learning and recognizing that we have learners from this end to this end in a classroom, and we need to make sure that we're acknowledging and meeting the needs of all of our learners, staying abreast on the best practices relative to curriculum and assessment. Same with equity and inclusion, which need to be aligned with our district goals. Professional learning communities, which again has been embedded as part of our culture, where we have staff sharing best practices relative to their grade level and content so that our students, whether they are in a classroom at Mendon or a classroom at Sutherland, are going to have similar high-quality experiences. Again, safety preparedness will take a lot more staff development. And then we, as a school district, are much more than the teachers that are in front of our students. It's our paraprofessionals, it's our support staff, it's our secretaries, it's our administrators, it's everyone, and making sure that all of them are receiving the highest quality professional development. So we understand that from the beginning of this process, especially with inflation and where CPI is right now, that we want to make sure that we are not exceeding the tax cap. Looking for innovative sources of revenue. So for example, we just received through our foundation $100,000 donation, but continuing that work from our school foundation and other places to seek revenue that does not impact the taxpayer. We want to make sure we're hiring and recruiting staff of the highest caliber. As you know, this is an area of concern across the state. And the level of students and qualified teachers that are entering the profession, along with the amount of staff that are leaving the profession, is a little bit concerning. So making sure we have the highest quality. We actually just went through a round of, boy, two days of, I want to say 24 interviews for elementary hirings in trying to get ahead of the game so that we can hire the people that are the highest quality before they're interviewing with other school districts as well. We also need to be cognizant of what's happening around us with property values and economic uncertainties, and then seeking cost efficiencies to further mitigate burdensome and financial impact of different mandates. And we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with that. We also, in our guidelines, have said that we need to maintain fiscal stability now into the future by looking at our reserve accounts. Again, I would say that when we are audited by the state, our reserve accounts continue to be among the highest praised in our area. We've had auditors and others look at working with Darren and our business department as a model and wanting Darren and others to come and speak to their boards and work with colleagues. We have a AA1 bond rating, which is the highest level we can. We want to maintain that. We need to maintain our community's investment in facilities and infrastructure. Today, we shut down Sutherland High School because of pipes that were probably 60 years old. We took out 8,000-plus gallons of water from the basement. A couple weeks ago, we had a water main break at Mendon High School. We've had many outages at our elementary schools. So looking to work with our capital projects relative to infrastructure, just like we would want to maintain our roof and maintain our furnace, we have to do that at a much larger scale in our schools. And then obviously advocacy with legislators to appropriate levels of funding, which have been very fruitful for us over the last probably five, six years of advocacy. And finally, meeting the legal mandates and contractual obligations. I'm going to turn it over to Darren for a second, but also want to recognize LeAnn. I think you're here, right? So LeAnn and Darren are such an integral part of our budget process, and LeAnn's office and Darren's office work magic relative to our budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren to take us through the next several slides.
Thank you. And before I get started, I also want to say thank you to LeAnn and the business office. A budget is a story about the future that's written based on the facts of the past, and the accuracy of that future is only based on the integrity of the data we used, and our team does a great job. Looking at the state aid progress, you find it interesting. The superintendent sits down when there's a slide, there's no answer, so to speak, because there is no state budget right now. So last time we were together, I shouldn't say last time, back in January when the governor's proposal came out, that's what's in the left side in blue there. The key things to take away from that was she was committed to continuing the trend to try to get foundation aid fully funded on an annual basis. But the key is on an annual basis. So think of it like your mortgage. You're making your full mortgage payment each month, but you might be in arrears for three years of not making any payments. So we were a district at that time, or two years ago, we were at 54% funded. Some districts were as much as 120%. We moved up to about 65% this year, and now it's going to go to about 78%. And within two years, we should be up to that full amount. Part of the caveat there is what will those increases, if any, be after that? And so we'll talk about that a little more in a little bit. So when we talk about state aid, there's all kinds of state aid reports that you might see in the media, you might see on websites, et cetera. And we have to really flush that data out, because sometimes the state uses old databases, they make certain assumptions, et cetera. We might know things that are happening during the current year that will affect next year's state aid, so we make those adjustments when we budget. So using the governor's proposal, and this is basically what you saw a few months ago, foundation aid, almost a 34% increase, which is, you know, unheard of. Foundation aid, as far as comparison to our total budget compared to most school districts in the county, is pretty low, but it's still a $3.8 million increase. I will draw your attention to BOSI's as well. You see the decrease there. That's partially due to COVID for a couple of things. This year, we thought we would have more kids that would want remote learning and participate in the virtual academy. We did not, so we did not spend the money. Therefore, we're not going to get the aid on that. As well as, similar to what we're dealing with with transportation, BOSI's is as well. They have a number of programs that they cannot staff. So therefore, they've had to tell school districts, "We can't provide the service to you, or you're on a waiting list." So again, if we're not spending the funds, we're not going to get the aid on it. So going all the way down, we're looking at about 10.8% or $2.7 million increase in our total state aid. Looking at the foundation aid, to give a little bit of history, if you will, we are increasing our percentage. That's what the chart on the bottom shows. We're up to about 76%. We're receiving about 76% of what we should. If you look since 2007, eight, when foundation aid started, it was Governor Spitzer at the time, we're about $101 million in arrears over that period of time. Don't hold your breath. I don't see it coming anytime soon, but we're very happy to be fully funded. So looking at the spending plan. High level, and this basically matches the budget books that you have. Is that what? Schools. This is by program, and you have the major sections. We're going to go down deeper into each one of these sections in a minute. So we're proposing $149 million budget, $5.6 million increase or 3.94% over the current year's budget. This budget serves over 5,500 students and approximately 1,145 full-time equivalent staff. Looking at the schools, and then here's the major components for each portion of the schools, such as school administration, support, regular teaching, et cetera. The schools make up about a 4.79% increase. Some of that has to do with staffing, most of which happened during the current year. Within that, we flush down into the elementary schools. Social-emotional learning is a big focus and continues to be so, as well as special education. And you need to be cognizant of, as students move from, say, fifth grade to sixth grade, their paraprofessional or aide might move with them to the middle school, so you may see some changes as far as that's concerned. In the middle schools, about 4.4% increase there as well. And that's for seven-and-a-half paraprofessionals. It was one of the drivers for special education and kids coming back from the hybrid model during the current year, as well as social-emotional supports. And I should preface beforehand, each one of these sections, we had unprecedented number of retirements this year. That is reflected throughout the entire budget. So there's some attrition savings that offset some of the increases. High schools, very similar with the special education, as far as some staffing that came over from middle school with the students, as well as from the hybrid program, as well as social worker and other behavioral supports. Central student services, a slight decrease to it, despite increasing behavior specialists and ELL and speech. The big driver there that I already spoke of is the BOSI side. That has to do with the virtual academy, not participating in that program. That was almost $400,000. Instructional services, that's the office of the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Standards Leaders, et cetera. No staffing changes in that area, 2.36% increase. Support services, this is basically anything that's not providing services directly to students. So finance and auditing, buildings and grounds, transportation is the only exception as far as the services. 6% increase. Some major things to flag here are, in transportation, we are reducing the number of bus drivers we're budgeting for by 10, based on the routing structures that we've had for this year. That still leaves us about 30 bus drivers short. So if anybody wants to be a bus driver, talk to me after the meeting, please. As well as one position, transitioning from support services over to human resources. Central administration includes the Board of Education and all the things that entail with that, such as legal defense, et cetera. District clerk, there are some increases in the cost for providing the vote in May because the cost of the county giving the machines is increasing. The superintendent's office, personnel and public relations, that's at 4.47%. So it's called undistributed, it's not allocated throughout the entire budget. Debt service and transfers. For those of us who have been around for many years, we are actually going to make our last payment on the huge $106 million capital project on one of the bonds. The bond that's going to stay is the one that's for the Kalkins Road Middle School, because that was building a brand-new school that goes on for 20 years. As well as the BOSI's capital project, we've made our final payment on that, or we will make our final payment, so we're able to decrease the debt service. Benefits is the other area. That represents about half of our total budget increase, and that's pretty common from year to year. We're doing a lot of things, both as a county with the consortiums, the health consortiums, as well as workers' compensation to try to control those costs. And our trends are far below the community-rated programs, as well as various contract negotiations and things of that nature. The BOSI's admin charge, just so you know, we're all part of BOSI's. It's Cooperative Education Services. This is our portion of it, based on what's called ARWADA. So putting it all together and looking at a pie chart as far as to see where the money goes from a program services, 39% goes into the schools directly, and a similar percentage and similar amount goes into the unallocated that we just got done talking about. One of the common questions I get is people want to see what the state calls the budget by object of expense. So they want to know total salaries, for example. So the way we just looked at the budget, it's hard to know what's going on exactly with salaries. Our salaries are up 4.37%. That's inclusive of the positions that we talked about, that we added. And you see benefits, equipment, et cetera. Some real cost drivers are contractual and utilities. And we all see it every day when we go to the fuel pump. Our buses are seeing the same exact thing, and our heat for the buildings. LeAnn and I, almost every day for a couple of weeks, kept saying we got to increase it more because it kept changing, and that was part of the conversations via emails with all the school business officials. BOSI's services are down, decreased a little bit, as we talked about, and the debt service decreased. So overall, we have $149.5, we're going to round it off, $0.6 million budget that we're proposing, $5.6 million increase or 3.94%. So pretty true to previous forms, salary and benefits make up 78% of our budget. You'll see in a few minutes, but that coincidentally, a similar percentage is our tax levy. And then in the right-hand chart shows, if you're looking at the increase, the $5.6 million, what percentage or what the drivers are there. So that's the proposed spending plan, how we're going to pay for it. We just got done talking about the state aid at the top there. Federal funds, that is not the stimulus money, the millions of dollars of stimulus money. That is required by law to be held separate from the general fund budget. We cannot co-mingle them. This is for Medicaid reimbursement, students that are Medicaid eligible. We can get a little bit of reimbursement from that. County sales tax is trending up tremendously. Part of that has to do with taxing the online sales. Use of fund balance and reserves, we're able to wean our dependence off of that a little bit. That's always good to do when you can. And down at the very bottom, the property tax levy, what we're asking the voters to pay, $111 million, and it's 2.53% increase, and that's within the property tax cap, the legal formula. So you can see there that when you look at the total revenues and compare that to appropriations, the budget is balanced. Just a pie chart to show the percentage of support for our budget. Tax levy this year is 75%. That's actually down a little bit from previous years, and that's a factor of the state aid increasing a few percentage points due to the commitment to the foundation aid. So that completes the superintendent's proposed budget. As previously mentioned, we have a couple of additional propositions. Neither are unusual to what we normally do. But for those who may not know, a reserve fund, in this case, a capital reserve fund, a reserve is simply like a savings account. The law allows a school district to have savings accounts for certain things, or they call them reserves. These are for capital type of expenses, and then we can further qualify them for certain things. So we have one for the purchase of buses, and we also have one for the purchase of instructional technology. You may see a number of districts go out with propositions for their buses, where they're asking their voters to levy additional tax to pay for those buses and/or additional issued debt. We are not asking for either one of those. We're simply asking to take money out of the savings account to pay for these items. So first, for the buses, we are requesting to replace 12 buses, 1166 passenger, 130 passenger. We would like to trade in 20 buses, so we're downsizing the fleet. Part of the reason why we're doing so many, for those of you who might have been here for a while, back in 2014, 15, we had a number of buses that had a lot of maintenance issues and rusting out. It was a problem that the industry was having with that model of bus, so we replaced more than our typical 10 to 12 buses. So we're going to get rid of those because they're becoming problematic transmission issues, and you're looking at about $3,800 a pop to repair those transmissions. So we're going to trade those in. About $1,578,000 is the estimated cost to do so. The trade-in allowance may reduce that sum. And we're estimating about $930 in state, $930 million, $930,000. Can we go back to the million? I like the million better. If we get to $930 million, we won't be doing a budget for about five years. That will be used to replenish the reserves, so we can keep using it into the future. So this is just the wording for that reserve that the voters will actually see at the poll. And again, we are not asking to issue additional debt or taxes to do so. And lastly, as our Director of Technology showed you, we have the Capital Reserve Fund for Instructional Technology. We want to do phase two for our one-to-one initiative for the laptop computers. So we're proposing to purchase $725,000 worth of computers to migrate into the additional grades and replace the old technology.
Okay, taking us to the home stretch. Some of the highlights in the budget are as follows. We, as we were thinking about this year's budget as opposed to the last couple of years' budgets, we were thinking about next year being relatively normal. So I think that we're at the point now where we can say we can resume full operations, similar to what we did this year. The budget is balanced. It remains within the property tax cap. It preserves all of our programs, so there are no program cuts within this budget. It's eased considerably by the efforts of our legislator to address the financial aid issue. So as Darren shared, we are incrementally going up to 100% funded. The year-to-year increase for the spending plan is 3.9%. And the property tax cap levy increase is 2.53, and again, we are within the tax cap. We, and I think this is important to note, the budget and tax levy growth are below the county average, despite having the lowest foundation aid per pupil and the percent fully funded in Western New York area. So as you look at our budget, a lot of the graphs that you saw are inverse to other districts. So when you see our levy being 70% and our aid being 20%, sometimes that's flipped. And so we do rely on our tax levy more than any other district in the county, and we're pleased to be able, again, to come to the board with a budget that is within the tax cap. May 10th for next steps. We have a public budget hearing, and May 17th is the budget vote and board election. We, at this point, have time for any questions from the board relative to what you saw. I think this is our fourth or fifth budget meeting, so hopefully you feel like you've been apprised along the way, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Pete, I want to make sure I'm covering you, so if you have any questions, just raise your hand along the way. I take that as a no. Anyone else at the table?
Okay, well, this isn't new to anyone here. We've been at this for a while.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion to approve the proposed budget? Thanks, Ted. Thanks, Sarah. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we need an approval of the minutes from March 15th, please. Motion to approve. Thanks, Jeff. Renee, any edits there? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports. We have a few upcoming Monarch County School Board Association meetings. We have board leadership on the 4th of May. Our executive committee next meeting is the 27th of April. Information exchange is on the 13th of April. The 27th is labor relations. Legislative is tomorrow. Sarah, I think you're scheduled to attend that. And we are finished with steering committee for the year, which is crazy to think. Dates to remember, the 7th of April, we have a board tour and visit. We will be having a visit with our staff at Mendon Center Elementary, which is pretty exciting for us. This will be one of our first visits in a while. The tour is at 7:15, the visit's at 7:30. And then we also have a guest visitor visiting the district.
Yeah, we're really excited to have a representative from Senator Brooks' office coming to join us for our tour and getting a chance to see our students in action as well. So looking forward to that. And then unfortunately, the senator herself is not able to join us for this visit, but she does plan to come in September, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you for arranging that for us, too. Schools closed for Superintendent's Conference Day on the 8th of April.
for Superintendent's Conference Day on the 8th of April, and then will be closed for spring break from the 15th to the 22nd. And our next board meeting is on the 26th. I forgot to take a show of hands who will be at the tour, actually at Mendon Center. If you're Renee, I know that. Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to the BOCI's annual election and budget vote, I need to pull that up real quickly. So with the board seats for BOCI's, we will have to take individual motions. So I will go through each candidate and we'll take a motion for approval. The first candidate, we do know very, very well. We mentioned her last time, Kim McCluskey, who is a resident of the Pittsburgh Central School District. She is running for Monroe One BOCI's Board for a term of office, which will begin on July 1st, 2022, and end on June 30th, 2025. If I may have a motion at the table for Kim? Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Robyn. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I see you, Pete. Okay. Seat number two, to cast one vote for the election of Dee Brian Buttram, resident of Rush Henrietta Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOCI's Board for a term of office, which will begin July 1, 2022, and end on June 30th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve? Sarah and Renee, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And seat three, to cast one vote for the election of Margaret Burns, resident of the West Rondacquay Central School District, as a member of Monroe One BOCI's Board for a term of office, which begins on April 28th, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion? Thanks, Jeff. Renee, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And then we do have a fourth seat for East Rochester. Unfortunately, it is a vacant seat. They did not find a candidate to fill that, so.
Anyone here from East Rochester?
Okay. We also have to approve the administrative budget vote. So we are voting to approve the proposed BOCI's administrative budget in the amount of $5,698,479. May I have a motion to approve? Thanks, Robyn. Thanks, Sarah. Any questions about that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Did I cover all bases, Deb? Okay. Financial report, Darren.
Long time no see.
I know.
Treasury report for February, we did receive the fourth quarter sales tax. It's up about $230,000 more than the same time period last year, and you saw in the budget that we increased the overall annual appropriation for that. The school lunch fund is doing much better than it did the year before. As far as participation, we still would like to see it get a little bit better compared to a couple of years ago. But our revenues are up about 150%, more than the same time period last year, and compared to expenditures at about 40% more. So we are not running the deficit that we had last year.
That's great news. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, please? Ted?
Ted.
Thanks, Renee. Questions for Darren? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Next is correction or addendum, I guess you will, for the seeker that we did about a year ago for the capital project that the voters voted on. The SED process to approve our project, they would have liked to have seen it be more explicit about the roof work at Mendon High School, even though it was in all the materials that we presented to the voters as well as to the state. So rather than spend more weeks trying to battle it out, I just said I would have that amended. So the fourth bullet in what you have before you specifically spells out by itself the Mendon High School roof repair.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve, please? Thanks, Sarah. And Jeff, any questions about that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren. Human resource report, Sean.
Good evening. First for your consideration is the professional staff report. We have one administrative appointment, one administrative resignation for retirement with 16 years, six months of service. We have one certificated staff appointment, two school-related professional appointments, one part-time claims auditor. We have 11 SRP resignations for retirement, totaling 170.82 years of service, three SRP resignations, one psychologist intern resignation, one part-time deputy claims auditor appointment, and we have revised spring coaching salaries with changes highlighted.
Been busy.
We're busy.
We have a motion, please. Renee and Ted, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Sean, before we go to the second part of your report, I would just like to highlight the administrative retirement, and that's Darren Kenny, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Boy, Darren, when you told me you were retiring this year, we've talked about that a lot, and I kept thinking this was just another conversation until it became official. So do want to share a few things that are actually pretty hard to articulate about Darren, so, and the work that he's done. But he's been responsible for all the real hard stuff in the district. So he's been responsible for leading the business office, the operations, maintenance, security, transportation, food services. And Darren, you've created a legacy of fiscally responsible budgets year after year. You've maintained positive comptroller reports, which is amazing. All of our ongoing audits have been positive. You've really led the county and the state, I would say, in how to use reserves. You've brought to us continuously, year after year, the highest bond rating per Moody's Investor Services, which saves the taxpayers a lot of money and the district a lot of money when it's time to borrow. You've also done what I think has seemed impossible, which is getting our full-day kindergarten to receive full-time aid. That's something we've been at for several years, and you never let go of that. So quite remarkable. The other thing that I'd like to highlight is under your direction, we've achieved utility and maintenance efficiencies. You've been on top of our capital improvements. You've used our capital reserve fund, which allows us to generate state aid without new taxes to the community. And the other thing that's really unique about us is that we entered this pandemic in the best fiscal health that we've had in decades, and we've never had a history of operating in a deficit under your leadership. And I guess I would close by just saying, most importantly, you have a love for kids, and you've shown a desire, which I think is pretty unique in your position, about learning as much as you possibly can around our instructional programs, our SEL programs, so you can see for yourself the value to students juxtaposed to the costs for the district. You're always rolling up your sleeves. You're ready to work with anyone. You've been student-centered, and you place a high value on helping others, as evidenced by, you know, something that many people might not know, but Darren's a pilot. He does a lot of volunteer flights for people in need and for countries in need or for states in need, or he's done a ton, students in need of training and working with community service relative to his pilot's license. And those that know you, Darren, know that you have a heart of gold and you have a brilliant mind, two qualities that are going to be very, very hard to replace. So I would just ask that, for those that don't fully know Darren, that you do take my word for it. He's amazing. He is amazing, and he's going to be so tough to replace. So please join me in a round of applause for Darren's commitment.
Okay. All right. Next for your consideration is the support staff report. We have two office clerk appointments, two school aid resignations, one bus driver resignation, one maintenance appointment, two food service worker appointments, one food service worker substitute resignation.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Jeff and Robyn. Questions? All in favor? Can't see Pete now. Okay. Okay. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And finally, for your consideration is a new administrative position for coordinator of social emotional learning.
May I have a motion, please?
So much.
Thanks, Ted. And Robyn, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Darren, I don't know how to follow up on what Mike had to say, but I have to tell you that the board will miss you terribly. And the value that you have given to each one of us in becoming a board member, educating us on fiscal responsibility, has been absolutely incredible. I can't thank you enough. You will be missed at this table, so we'll end there. Thank you.
It is on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. And superintendent's report.
So we have, we've been dealing with quite, we do not need an executive session tonight.
Thank you.
We've been dealing with a lot of COVID stuff as a, as a group up here. So we've been very short-staffed this last week. We're not seeing a huge uptick in our, in our buildings. Most of our buildings are between zero and three. Wouldn't you say, Shayna, is probably the?
High.
Okay, so we have a high at five at one of our elementary schools, and the rest are between zero and three. So we're hanging in there. I think we're just pushing through with that concept of looking at this as an endemic and making testing and masking available for those that need it. From a central office team standpoint, we've had several of us out with illnesses, and so this last week has been difficult, and we're almost all back here today. We're short two of us. I think at one point, we were short 75% of us. So we're back and hanging in there. So between the sicknesses and what's happened the last few days, it's been relatively crazy from our perspective up here. So one of the craziness, things that we contended with was Sutherland High School. We were able to hang in there the bulk of the day on Monday, and then we had to close knowing that we had four broken pipes. They had to bring out, like I shared earlier, over 8,000 gallons of stuff out of the buildings. Right now, they are disinfecting and cleaning the Sutherland basement, and again, it's a result of very old pipes. But Jeff Beersley, are you here? I don't know if Jeff can see me or hear me. So it's remarkable. So Jeff, if you could just come in here. I think most, most places would have closed Mendon with a water main break and probably Sutherland for a couple of days. So Jeff and his crew really do all of our work along with the town together, and the work they did today in crawl spaces and drilling big holes. So I'm going to have to apologize to the Sutherland students on behalf of Jeff's wonderful expertise, because you're going to have school tomorrow. So Sutherland students, you will be back. You will be back. Sutherland teachers are not allowed to clap. So on a, on a more serious note, and this is the last of my updates, is that obviously there's a full crowd here for a reason. So I want to address the Rainbow Crowd Club. No, the Rainbow Club, not the Rainbow Crowd. Controversy in a roundabout way, but also in a direct way at the same time. So just bear with me. I have some notes, but I also just want to kind of speak from my heart as well. So this year, more than, more than years in the past, I've made it a point to visit schools and check in with students, both formally and informally, as much as I possibly, as much as I possibly could. And I will tell you, it's really hard for, for those of you that aren't in school and aren't able to see our students and only can see our students through what you hear on social media or the news, our students are incredible. They're incredible in every, every sense of the word. So you can hear, you know, different things, and those different things happen in every single district across the globe. Our kids are spectacular. Last night, we had a small forum of students that spoke. I meet regularly with, with a group of Sutherland and Mendon students. I'm in the halls, I'm with the principals, I'm working with the teachers and staff, and I do feel I have my finger on the pulse without question. And our kids are top-notch, and so that's something all of you need to be really proud of. And our community's top-notch, and there's not a better place. We have a lot to celebrate and a lot to be thankful of and thankful for. So our kids are compassionate, they're empathetic, and they want the same thing, I think, that all of us here want. They want our schools to be filled with respect, and they want our schools to be filled with care, and they all want to feel welcomed. They want to feel valued. I make it a point when I, when I speak with students in large groups, to talk about how hard it is to be a student today. And so just go, bear with me here for a second. Think about when you were in high school and what you were doing in high school. Literally, think about it. It was, it was still kind of hard, right? It was hard because you dealt with, you know, all the stuff that you do while trying to figure out your life and who you are. But our students are now doing this with social media twentyfold on them. I don't know how our students do it. And not only do I not know how our students do it, but they do it so well. Most of them. But it's hard. This is a hardest era, I think it is, to be a student in high school right now with social media and other pressures. So I do acknowledge that with them, and then at the same time, I acknowledge the fact that they're also really resilient, and they're finding their way through. I worry about our students and what they're seeing and feeling based on what's happening with social media. I worry about how they feel about themselves, their own self-worth. I worry about bullying that happens on social media. I worry about the negative stuff on social media. A lot of us are here tonight because of stuff that have happened with adults on social media, right? So we're, so as adults, I think we struggle on how to navigate social media. Our kids struggle how to navigate with social media, but their brains are a little bit different, too. And so we need to be, we just need to be cognizant of that. I don't know how many students are listening to this tonight. The Sutherland students are probably still out having fun, frolicking after their day off, but very sincerely, I would say to all of our students that are listening tonight, regardless of who you are, regardless of your race, your identity, your socioeconomic status, your mental health needs, your religion, your level of ability or disability, what's critical, and I believe this to be true for every single person in this room, know that in Pittsburgh, we more than accept you, and we appreciate all that you bring to our schools. So I So I don't want people to be misled with the reasons people are here tonight. Because I know, and I know in looking in your eyes tonight, regardless of what sign you have or, or what beliefs or values you're brought up on, we want our kids to be well. We want our kids to do well. And we want our kids to feel welcomed in our schools. The hard part is how. Right? So we have the same end in mind, but how we get there, we all have different ideas. And I think that's where the rubber meets the road. And those are the things that, as being members of an amazing community, we can figure out. We can do that. A week ago, and you talk about how things change here. A week ago, I was thinking that tonight we would spend our time processing the business of the board. I thought we would spend a lot of time on the budget, questions around the budget. I thought we would... I, I was going to bring in a huge cake for Darren. But, but the reality, and it's the reality, it's our reality right now, is that social media kinda took over in, in a, in like, in a, in a blink of an eye. It took over. So we saw a lot of stuff happening across the board, a, a, a lot of conversations, if you wanna call them that. Some productive, some not productive, some I wouldn't want my children to see and some I would, going back and forth around a Rainbow Club PTSA enrichment proposal. And all of that stuff that happened, I would say between probably Thursday and today, has spiraled into, into the boardroom. And my concern with all of this, and, and I would ask for everyone, if you want the truth, don't go to social media. Right? I, I really want you to, and I applaud all of you for being here because I think by you being here means that you are invested enough to find out what's, what's the truth and what's, what's happening. So I appreciate that. There, there's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of speculation, a lot of unnecessary hurt feelings because we're a community. We're a community that, boy, there isn't a better one. And we need to take care of each other. So let's do that. Let's find a way to take care of each other here. I, I wanna share with you what, what I think happened and, and where we go from here. So historically, our PTSA enrichment activities have been discussed with principals and they've been approved. So historically, we've had chess club, Lego club, and a couple other clubs. Sure, yes. And, and they've, they've kind of been, you know, just approved, but they've always, they've always gone through the principal and then there, there's a registration process and all of, and all of that, then we begin. So recently, we identified that some buildings had different processes, different levels of communication, different procedures, different levels of approval. And in some cases, we had principals find out about enrichment activities after the registration was open. So we need to fix that. What I love about our district is that it gave us the opportunity to, instead of saying, "You did this wrong," or "You did this wrong," or "You did this wrong," it allowed our PTSA president and myself to come together to say, "We need to do better. We need to solidify a process to make sure that all nine buildings, when there's enrichment activities, that there's a process." That things just aren't rubber stamped, that there's not one thing happening in one building and one thing happening in another building. So I'm gonna share with you, I think, which is part of the impetus of this, of what happened Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So Wednesday or Thursday of last week, there was a conversation about how we're going to look at enrichment activities from PTSA. So all program requests are now going to be reviewed by the PTSA After School Enrichment Program Committee, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and our building principals that may host the program will all also have a part in what's approved or not approved. And as appropriate, our Assistant Superintendent will also review the proposed offerings with other people that, that may be necessary, such as our Coordinator for Equity. And because this impacts principals in buildings, all the principals need to be part of that discussion, and that's called our Elementary Leadership Team. So that group is pulled together. All current and existing PTSA enrichment programs will be asked to reapply for approval using this process. And programs that wanted to run in the fall must submit their applications by August 1st. And this process will apply to everything. It will apply to all, all programs. So since that was outlined, I believe, on Wednesday, right around there, there was a lot of conversation in the meeting and it went from there to social media. And then we were bombarded with a lot of different things. Everything from, "You're doing this because you, you can promote something," or "You're doing this to boycott something," or "You're doing..." And the reason is, what I shared earlier, is that we need consistency, we need transparency, and we need accountability for everything that we bring to our students after school. And we can do that in tandem because we've shared a great relationship with PTSA. So I'm getting close to the end here. I heard that. Did someone say, "Thank God"? All right, so I, I would say this, that we're here now because of something that really happened in the spirit of trying to improve a process, along with, I think, a club that is of a sensitive nature. And people started just going crazy on, on, on social media with that. So where are we with all of this? So we received two applications for Rainbow Club, which is an after-school PTSA enrichment activity from Thornell Road and from Jeff Road. We will take those clubs along with every, those enrichment activities, along with any others through this process. At the end of the day, I know, you know, if I were to go full circle, we want to work with everyone, we wanna work collaboratively, we wanna listen to our community, we want to make sure that we create the best environment possible for our students. Proposals for these committees could come back denied, they can come back approved, they can come back, "We need more information," which isn't a bad thing. Because at some point, as we look at, how do we get to that "how," we all need to have our voices heard. There's no one's voice in here that's wrong. We need to start listening to each other, though. So I, I will clarify the following and then, and then I'm going to conclude my, my report. So some things to, to understand about the PTSA enrichment. It happens after school. The Board of Education has no role in approving PTSA enrichment programs. I have no idea how there were... There was a campaign of some sort to say, "Email the board," or "Email me." It, it's, it's, it's not a popularity thing, it's, it's, it's just listening to people's voices because you all need to be heard. But it goes through a process and it's not the, the board's not gonna approve or deny a, a PTSA enrichment club. Enrichment activities are developed by PTSA and students can only participate with parent approval. So, you know, as I look at signs that say, "Support parental rights," you know, that's part that's built in to this, is that students can't attend an enrichment without parental consent. Just like when, when we are, boy, back in the day when, when I was a principal at Barker Road, we wouldn't do health curriculum around certain topics without parental input. You are in charge of your kids. PTSA wants to support students that are in need of that support. So there doesn't have to be a yea or nay. This is, this is about choice and it's about certain parts of the district overseeing, you know, certain things to make sure that we're looking out for the best interest of our kids as well. So the mission of the PTSAs in enrichment is to provide a safe and supervised after-school educational enriching or recreational program for school-aged children grades K through 12. Building-level PTSAs will choose programs based on their individual demographics, interests, and parent commitment. So, you know, I, I guess I just want everyone to know that we're, we're in an era right now where, we're, we're in a place right now where we're listening to kids a lot more. I think we should have done it a, a lot sooner and, and... But we have, we have students that, that need a lot of different things. And so if we can support students, if they need this support, or this support, or this support, this is PTSA's attempt in providing an additional level of support. Parental choice is there. There's choice in, 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 in all of this. And to be quite frank, it, it's something, and I haven't seen the applications yet, but I have a lot of questions because I think that our questions are what makes us better. And I think that feedback is what makes us better. Firing back and forth on social media doesn't. I know how strongly people feel on different parts of this, but boy, I will tell you, if, if, if I think about my child, I'll do whatever they need for them to be happy and healthy. And what my child needs is not what Deb's child needs or what Amy's child needs. And as a schools, we've found, we've gone from here to here. And, and so our job is to support and, and to do it with a level of accountability, a level of parent input. And again, when we talk about PTSA, the P is for parents. So parents have choice in all of this. And at the end of the day, we wanna, we wanna do our diligence in making sure that when program is run, they're run, looking at it from a lot of different lenses, that we feel by working together, we can do better. So with that, I, I thank you all.
Thanks, Mike. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sarah, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business?
So I do have a statement for new business and it relates to what Mike has been talking about. But I have to share that last night, some of our board members had the pleasure of attending yesterday's second Power Hour, and I have to thank Vincent French for being the facilitator of that. It was really unbelievable to see our students group together, a panel of students who represent our community, our community that's comprised of uniquely beautiful people. That esteemed panel of students should give us all a promising hope for a better future of Pittsburgh and of our greater Rochester community. They described the importance of acceptance, acceptance and understanding of our differences. So it's come to our attention that, you know, there have been a lot of attacks on social media and it's been an outlet for divisiveness on the topic of a PTSA-sponsored after-school enrichment program. To clarify, the Board of Education does not have jurisdiction to approve or deny PTSA-sponsored after-school enrichment programs, which is why this isn't an agenda item for tonight's meeting. That said, given the vitriol shared amongst social media channel, channels, the Board of Education needs to be very clear that we denounce all forms of hate and discrimination, in this case toward our LGBTQIA+ students and families. The district, the district and the Board of Education have been and will continue to be committed to building an inclusive, inclusive learning environment which celebrates and leverages all of our differences. We're all different and unique. The foundation of our Board of Education is set by our district mission and vision statements, and I welcome all of you to go out on our website and take a look at our mission and vision. It's what drives each one of us behind this table. And our core values are such an integral part of what we do in this district. I can't stress that enough. So I just wanna reiterate what our core values are. We're student-centered. We provide supportive, supportive environment for all, realizing that we don't, we don't have 100% of our students that fall into that category. We're focused on continuous improvement at all times. We're progressive and we work collaboratively. Our job as board members is to remove barriers for students to have access to an equitable learning environment within our school buildings. We need to cultivate the unique gifts and talents of all of our students and embrace the culture of this beautiful Pittsburgh community. So thank you.
So we have had 81 write-in public comments for this evening. So sit down and get comfy. We are not going to read those. We are going to post them. So anyone who has submitted a write-in public comment prior to the noon deadline, we will have those posted. We did have one of those public comments that was regarding a refusal to mask if mandated in the future. The rest of them pertain to the after-school enrichment program. So I do need to remind everyone of our board protocol. I don't think I know everyone in the room. I know a lot of familiar faces, but I would like to just reiterate the protocol about public comment. The Pittsburgh Board of Education values transparency and public comments made during its meetings. As such, the Pittsburgh Board of Education provides this agenda item at its regular meetings. Board of Education meetings are not public forums, rather, they're business meetings held in public where dialogue is not normally conducted with audience members. The purpose of this agenda item is for the board to receive respectful and constructive feedback, opinions, and information from district residents. Given the amount of public comment, and to be fair to our residents, privilege of the floor will only be permitted to those who reside in the district. Comments are taken under the advisement by the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools. Respect and civility are required during these meetings, particularly as we have students who are both here tonight and probably watching at home. Comments should be in reference to an interest or topic, not an individual. Each speaker will have the floor for no more than three minutes and yielding time amongst speakers is not permitted. The Board President reserves the right to limit the total amount of speaking time. This evening, we will have 30 minutes of speaking time, just to let everyone here know that. In an effort to avoid repetitiveness, if speakers are attending with other residents who have the same input, we ask that you group, your group designates one person to address the board as a group, and we will give you an extra time if you so choose to do that. For speakers who do not follow meeting and decorum protocols, the speaker's privilege to use the floor will no longer be recognized by the Board of Education. Those planning to come forth when I call your name, if you could please give us your address, be clearly into the microphone, and we will keep your three-minute time limit. And Robin, I'm gonna ask you to keep the 30-minute time limit, okay? All right. That said, Catherine Baker, you're first.
Right there. Good evening. I'm Catherine Baker. I reside at 97 Caversham Woods. As was mentioned, I'm here in support of Rainbow Club, and I'm here as a parent, as a liaison to the DEI Committee, and as a pediatrician. I feel that Rainbow Clubs are a safe, supportive place for gender diverse youth and youth who come from gender diverse families. This safe and inclusive space is important for children, and as mentioned earlier, these are optional, where parents have to choose for their children to participate. We know that there are considerable mental health disparities for gender diverse youth, including increased rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidality. So when I think about a safe, inclusive space for young children at an early age, I think that can be a preventative measure to combat these disparities and prevent these mental health outcomes. So I'm here to support Rainbow Club, and I think as a community and as a school district, if we want to support every child and every family and be truly inclusive, then this is something that we should offer at all of our elementary schools. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Young, and I'm a taxpayer at 44 Green Drive. My family has been living here for almost 18 years. We're very pleased to see many kind, loving, and dedicated teachers and staffs at Pittsburgh. As a parent, I have deep concerns about the things happening in recent years, and our ranking for both high schools keep going down nationwide and statewide. Here is a fact. Menon High School was 82 in 2012, 193 in 2021, 111 jobs. Southern, 116 in 2012, and 319 in 2021.
Teresa, you're addressing the board. You're not addressing the audience.
All right. 203 jobs, just in nine years. We choose to live in Pittsburgh. It's an investment for many families. Investment come with a set of obligations and standards. Investment has check and balance. We used to trust the school and teachers confidently give our children in their hands, but things are changing, maybe without your noticing. Over, here's another fact, over a two-year period, data shows statewide enrollment of our public schools has decreased by 5%. During the same two-year period, charter school enrollment rose by 14,000, and homeschool students are quadrupled. I noticed there's a lot of attention on the pronoun, but you know there are other seven parts of speech, like noun, verb, adverb, conjunction, interjection, proposition, and adjective. Pronoun is just one out of eight. Schools should teach the facts and the reasoning. Moral values should come from home and church. Schools should provide a safe environment for teachers to teach. If teachers need to worry about how to dress a boy or girl to avoid offending them, and it may get them canceled or even get fired, how can they focus on teaching passionately?
They'll figure it out.
Parents, we should take the ownership of our children's education. Our children are God's blessing to us. I strongly encourage you to go to your kid's classroom, to school, to district, to volunteer, to attend the meetings. So speak out if you don't agree with them. You have the right to vote, which some other countries don't even have this privilege. We pay a lot of school tax to district, expecting them to do a good job. They should be responsible, and we should make them accountable. After serious consideration, our family decided to pull our daughter out of MCE last year. We joined a fantastic local homeschool group last year. When others are busy talking about, is a boy a girl, is a girl a boy, they are learning parts of atmospheres and the seven wonders of the Asian world. When others are working on sending the boys to the girls' locker room, they are learning how to do the research and write an essay.
Thank you, Teresa.
All right, last sentence. All right.
Teresa, time is up.
School, what is your priority?
Time is up. Time is up. So, I need to correct a couple of things, Teresa, that you mentioned. One is our rankings. I have seen this over and over, and that has been brought to my attention, and I am going to correct that because the U.S. News published the annual 2019 Best High School Rankings, which ranked for the first time every eligible public high school in the nation. So, what does that mean? It means that they altered the ranking system to include every eligible public high school in the nation. That's 17,800 schools, okay? Prior to that, they were only ranking 2,700 schools. So when I hear the rankings, I have the research, I can forward that to you. So please reach out to me via email, and I will forward that to you. Thank you. No, it's not dropping. It is not dropping, and I will point that out to you. Jeremy Schur.
Thank you. Teachers who can't respect their students' pronouns should not be teaching. I don't want those teachers in my school. I don't want them teaching my kids, whether my kids are cis, non-binary, or trans. I want them to be able to figure that out on their own with support. I think a lot of people who are cis and heterosexual don't understand the concept of the safe space, and that when kids are in school and their pronouns are not respected, school is not safe for them. And I'd like people who are not familiar with this concept of the safe space to think about how it would feel if the student, not the teacher, we're not worried about the safety of teachers here, we're worried about the safety of kids, right? Kids. I'll say it again, kids, who cannot feel safe at school because half the people in this room are clapping for transphobia. All right? Well, you just clapped for that speech, and that was classic transphobia.
Okay, we're, let's just clear, we're addressing the board, not the audience. The audience, give respect to the speaker, please. He has the privilege of the floor. I'm directing everybody here. Go ahead.
Well, there are going to be many speakers ahead of me, and there are speakers.
Jeremy, continue, please.
Okay, I want to respond to that because someone just raised the concept of pedophilia. All right? This is what you're going to be hearing, because if the door is open, right? If we talk about generally, oh, there are mean people on social media, and people shouldn't be mean, right? Then you know what's going to keep happening? You're going to keep hearing people calling people pedophiles because they support giving dignity and respect to kids who are trans or non-binary. All right? That's what's going to keep happening. You, as the board, you have the power to close the door on this, and we're watching to see if you do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I guess I just want to just back up a minute, and the people that are in this room right now, you're here for a reason, right? You have what you feel is the best interest of your kids and your children. What we can't do, we can't, anyone can't come up and speak and then call names or have names called at them. This is the stuff that we try to prevent at school. There's diversity of a lot of things. Diversity of thought is a big one. And I think that we, if nothing else, I would just ask for the remaining part of our time here, we respect each other. It's a start, because we're not going to solve everything here tonight, but we can respect each other tonight. So please respect each other as we move forward.
If that happens again, we will shut public comment down, and that is my right.
Thank you. I'm Lori Lightkeb, 6 Stonegate Lane. I want to thank the Board of Education for reiterating your commitment to our LGBTQIA+ students and families. We appreciate the continued collaboration together toward our mutual goals. The New York State PTA Executive Director, Kyle Bellokopitsky, states, "New York State PTA continues to be proud of the work our units across the state accomplish daily, especially in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Pittsburgh Central PTSA offers a fantastic after-school enrichment program, and their new Rainbow Club truly supports all students and is a great reflection of PTA's work to make every child's potential a reality. We applaud Pittsburgh Central PTSA for their commitment to their students and families and look forward to working with them and our other 250,000 members to support every child with one voice," end quote. As the Pittsburgh PTSA, we are currently working in close and respectful collaboration with the New York State PTA and the Pittsburgh Central School District to clarify, update, and follow transparent processes together through continual improvement, which we both value, to support PTSA programs, which include programs like the Rainbow Club, and to continue to provide a wide range of options for our students. We appreciate, value, and thank all the volunteers who have worked so many hours on this for our students. All of our volunteers deserve our respect. We are all here tonight because we care about what is best for our students. To find ways for students to belong and thrive in community together, to grow up to be kind and respectful, to build friends and strong relationships that will help them overcome the challenges they face in their lives. Feeling connected is important. It is important to mental health. It is important to fostering community, and it is important so that we can feel safe to learn and grow. We want our students to feel connected and heard. I imagine everyone here wants that. I know you, as a Board of Education, our district, and our PTSA all value collaboration to prioritize opportunities for our students to feel connected. Our PTSA Optional After-School Enrichment Program is for students to connect and grow together through all of its offerings, and it is also one of the many ways we, as PTSA, support our shared commitment to the mission to prepare our students to be their best, to do their best, and make a difference in the lives of others. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Govan. I live at 10 Concord Drive. So I was really impressed with the budget presentation, and the things that struck me were the words "whole child" and "including equity and inclusion," and I really appreciated Assistant Superintendent's statement that a budget is the story of the future based on facts of the past. I think that's true of so many things that the board does, that you're building the story of the future. And in that story, we've seen some contentious things. There are ways to avoid some of that contentiousness. One of them is building shared vocabulary. Shared vocabulary is something that builds collaboration that allows people to work together. This is something that's understood by companies like Starbucks, who we all know have the vocabulary of their menu, Disney, Imagineers. We all know that language, and we're able to relate to that. Nature and the Australian Asian Medical Journal also have shown that shared vocabulary builds collaboration and community, and you avoid some of the nastiness that we've seen if you're able to do that. So I ask the board to support activities for our children that will continue to build shared vocabulary and the ability to communicate and collaborate in ways that are productive. I'm the parent of a non-binary kid, a non-binary kid who has been bullied ruthlessly in our schools, but supported so beautifully by administration and by teachers. And that modeling is so important to their well-being. And the more that we can build that vocabulary and that shared understanding, the better experience my child will have all the way through their schooling. Thank you for supporting that sort of environment for my kid and for all kids who are struggling.
Drew Mokris, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Hello, my name is Drew Mokris. I'm at 11 Burnley Rise. My pronouns are he/him. I am a PTSA member, and I'm also a board member on the Pittsburgh Education Foundation, and I am a parent of a kindergartner who participated in Rainbow Club at Thornel Road this winter. I'm here today to speak in support of Rainbow Club, and I ask the district to approve it in a fair and timely manner, and also ask the district to speak out strongly, as the board just did, against the hatred we've seen leveled against the Rainbow Club in recent weeks. Like many, I was dismayed by the awful accusations of racism and bullying in Pittsburgh that we all read about in the media last year. One of the positive things that the district did back then in response was to host listening circles to gather feedback from parents on how to improve. My family participated in one of these circles, and we urged the district to find more ways to proactively combat intolerance and foster belonging among students from all walks of life, rather than just react when ugly incidents occur. We want Pittsburgh to be known as a welcoming place, and the decisions made here do so much to ensure that that continues in the future. My daughter, Franny, was excited to do Rainbow Club as her winter after-school activity. In Rainbow Club, she listened to great new books and got to see other kids and grownups reinforce how important it is to be respectful to people who may be different from you. Everything on the Rainbow Club reading list was entirely age-appropriate. When I asked her the other day about Rainbow Club, she told me they don't just talk about gender identity, they also talk about being kind and welcoming and supportive. I started a new job last fall, and while meeting new coworkers, I was happy to see a tradition of people stating their personal pronouns during introductions. I told Franny about this and also told her about how one of my new coworkers said that they use they/them pronouns, and without missing a beat, Franny turned to me and said, "Oh, does that mean they're non-binary?" And she's only five. I was so proud seeing my thoughtful kindergartner already so well-equipped with the vocabulary to navigate a world where respect for gender expression is growing more commonplace, thankfully. Rainbow Club is exactly the kind of proactive step that we encouraged the district to take back during those listening circles. There are always going to be members of the LGBTQIA+ community among our students and families in Pittsburgh. Sadly, members of this community are at higher risk of being bullied. So everything we can do to show them that they are respected here, that they can live their lives with dignity, and that they have allies, is so meaningful and important. Please, please, continue to allow parents the option of sending their kids to Rainbow Club.
Meredith Graham.
I'd like to yield my time to Jen Canning. I was going to yield my time to you. Oops. All right, I'm sorry. My name is Meredith Graham. I live at 21 Northfield Gate. And in the interest of time, I'd just like to say I fully support Rainbow Club. If there are any students listening, we care about you, and we support you. And, you know, this has been a really difficult time for a lot of people, and I'm glad that the board is so supportive and listening to all the different aspects that everyone has to say. I appreciate it very much, and congratulations, Darren. Thank you very much. Oh, my pronouns are she/her.
Hi, my name is Amy Ord.
Hi, my name is Amy Ord, 15 Sunrise. I'm a parent of a kindergartner and I was a school psychologist before that who worked with LGBTQIA kids and others struggling around that. All students should feel included and like they belong. We can help foster this by using age-appropriate material led by qualified instructors. I have three questions regarding the Rainbow Club. Is the PTA qualified to run a group like this? These are really sensitive topics and having unlicensed people teaching this material poses risks of harm to children and ethical and legal risks to the PTA and the school district. My second question, is it developmentally appropriate? There's a big difference between kindergartners and fifth graders. The State Department of Ed sets four standards of what to teach and when. You can look up the family life and the sexual health standards for K1 and 2 and up. And there's a big misalignment between what Rainbow Club wants to introduce and what the state deems age-appropriate to teach. For example, students in the Buffalo area schools this week are just being introduced to these concepts in ninth grade, such as what is LGBTQ, what's it stand for, what is a GSA, what is an ally? The Rainbow Club is teaching this to kindergartners. The content of the club, you know, just the gay B.C.'s uses confusing terminologies and tells kids if they like both boys and girls, they might be bisexual. If they only like their own gender, they are gay or lesbian. If they like everything, they are pan. Others imply that biological girls who like to play in the mud are simply transgender boys. This is confusing to young children. We need to stop being so quick to apply labels and to put everyone into groups. These are developing children and they're in their most formative years. These are complex topics and they're usually, you know, introduced more in high school and in middle school. Rainbow Club, from what I found in elementary schools, are usually very rare. Usually the parents attend with them, it's sometimes in a community center, and it's more of a play group or a social group. I found one in the whole New York City Public School District and that was led by a certified counselor, never the PTA. My third question, is there potential harm to children? Kids are easily influenced from authority figures, media, and peers. Kids want to please their teachers, they want to say the right words and do the right things to get praise. Kids also talk. I know kids are talking about Rainbow Club that aren't even in Rainbow Club and the things they are saying, they don't clearly understand the concepts that have been introduced to them. Children come to school with various backgrounds and abilities to deal with these topics. For example, kids with special education needs, you know, kids with autism are seven times more likely to struggle with gender and sexual confusion. They have difficulties reading, social cues, taking things very literal. You don't want to put the idea into the head of a young autistic kid.
Thank you, Amy. The time's up.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, oh, I'm going to take this off, sorry. I'm Elizabeth Roth, 40 Baroque Drive. I don't know if Sadie's going to get up to come and talk, but she's got a beautiful, beautiful letter here from her son, who attends Rainbow Club with my daughter and Franny. And if we don't get time to read it, we'll make sure that we get that to you because it's a really beautiful narrative on Rainbow Club. I'd like to take issue with a couple of things that have been said tonight. The first is actually, I'd like to praise that in the budget proposal today, I was really heartened to see equity and inclusion mentioned in several different places, in the curriculum budget, in the resource budget. You talked about hiring for another socio-emotional learner. Rainbow Club is all about socio-emotional learning, but in a supportive, completely optional manner. I would like to fully commend and get behind the parents who stood up to run this club, not knowing that this was what they were going to face at the end of it. They were fully approved by Roger DeBauw, so that was one of the things I'd like to take issue at. It was, it made it sound, Mr. Perro, in your remarks, as though Rainbow Club had some kind of gone under the table and hadn't been approved. It went through the full process at Thornell School. Sadie and the other facilitators were fully approved, they went through background checks and all of the steps that needed to make the club run. I would like to also then point out that Rainbow Club is the only new club that has been paused. There is a new eco-club at Thornell School that has not been paused for the spring semester. So we really need to look at where our unconscious bias is coming into the process and where right now we have a club on hold due to a potentially controversial, difficult topic. I ask that you accelerate the review and the approval of the club and that you fully stand up for the LGBTQI students and the allies, one of which is my daughter, who attended. And then finally, the final thing I wanted to just take a little bit of issue with is earlier today, and I fully commend that you identified that we all bring different things to the table. And in listing diversity, you talked of people of color, gender. Often at work, we talk about veterans. You mentioned people with different abilities, people on spectrums, different types of learners. The one word you did not use was LGBTQIA+, and that was the topic in everyone's hearts today. So like other teachers, I ask that you stand forward and really denounce the hate speech that we've started to see and show that you are behind, as we are as parents, our LGBTQIA+ students and that we have their back. They don't feel safe, they get bullied, they are more at risk for suicide and mental health issues. We have to go further for them than we do for our other students in some respects and that starts in kindergarten, making sure that from day one on that playground, they have a safe space. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Hi, my name is Andrew Evans, I live at 66 Meadow Cove Road. I have three kids at school in the district, one seventh and two ninth graders. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the efforts put behind the Rainbow Club and the collaborative nature by with parents, teachers, school administration, and hopefully an understanding of the board, such as yourselves, and the goals and the initiatives behind this project. You know, again, it's about building awareness and inclusivity. I fully respect people's decisions to participate or not participate. I can tell you that my own children probably would not, as far as I can tell, have participated in this activity. I might not have had the awareness to suggest that they participate in this activity, but within a few years, one of my children has educated me about what inclusivity means, what understanding, social, emotional development is. And my child is currently now a seventh grader at Hawkins Road, has, you know, radically changed my understanding. I just want to quote his words tonight when he learned about the brouhaha that was brewing over this topic. Almost every LGBTQ kid in my son's school has been called names and bullied about their identity and their pronouns. So he identifies a whole group of kids who are systematically being abused, right, by their peers. And so I think that this is, and that's in the middle of middle school. And so I think we're talking about initiatives to change that. And I just want to speak out in support of that. I want to thank the board for considering it. I want to just support, again, a collaborative process between our teachers, our parents, our administration. And that's it. I really, I give the rest of the time, I think, to a large number of people who came out here. The last thing I wanted to say to Superintendent Perro's notion about this is thankfully, as I completely shun and avoid all social media, I learned about none of this through that circuit, but, you know, it was really just through the communication of people who care up and down my street and in my kids' schools. So thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Can I just say something about the ASEP that is totally unrelated or, I actually wrote the original policies of the after-school enrichment program in 2008. And I would be hap, I don't know where it got lost in the line, but there was a whole chain of command that was written as these programs started to expand. So I don't know what happened here, but I do want to let you know, and maybe it had to do with the schools being closed for two years. So there was a whole thing and I think maybe it just got lost in translation. So I read what they have and it's pretty close to what we had written, you know, 12 years ago. So thank you to whoever went read back to it to make it fair for everybody. So, anyway, my name's Susan Gould, 35, Carriage Court. I'm here to speak about the dropping of some of the honors programs. Schools around the nation are canceling advanced placement courses and eliminating honors programs in the name of equity. They're doing away with homework deadlines, attendance requirements, test scores. We're told these changes will make the schools more inclusive for those who are underperforming. Sadly, it seems Pittsburgh has fallen prey to this way of thinking too. Dismantling the school meritocracy is insane. It robs students, especially children from low-income and immigrant households, of their best chance to get ahead. Parents at a school in downstate were just notified that the school's AP Calculus course no longer meets the college board standards. Students taking the course to prepare for the exam and apply to college have now been sabotaged. Attacking honors and AP courses and exams is happening everywhere, but it's a nonsensical approach to a serious problem, the racial gap in student performance. One thing I'd like to know is what gap is in the Pittsburgh schools and why the decision to eliminate honors classes was made without parent and student input? Most honors and AP courses come near the end of a student's public school experience. Attacking these courses are devastating to students from all backgrounds who are counting on their hard work and talent to pave their way into a competitive college. The answer to this gap shouldn't be to sabotage the end of a student's academic achievement by eliminating opportunities they have worked towards. The answer is to prepare disadvantaged students in the early grades. I just want to finish off. Is Pittsburgh saying the honors-level students will have an honors-level curriculum at the regents-level classes? I don't see that in the course catalog. In other academic areas of study, there's a clear distinction between the two. If so, does that mean students suddenly are going to be accelerated? Is the expectation that all students will be expected to perform at a higher level? Or will we see an inflation of grades to help accommodate those students? Will we see a lessening of standards to help all students succeed, even if that means sacrificing the true meaning of education? I'm skipping ahead, I just want to give you the last thing. In school, it used to say equity, there was a specific definition for equity. It used to be in all the elementary schools, it said, "It doesn't mean giving every child the same thing, it means giving them what they need." I'm asking you, please continue to give these students what they need.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. I apologize to those of you who would like to speak, but I do think that we covered the topic. I tried to look at all of the different remarks and tried to bucket them into categories. So that's how I went through that. And again, I just want to mention that all of the 81 responses that we received online will be posted and you'll have access to them. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thanks, Ted. Thanks, Robyn. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.